Good evening. This is a regular city commission meeting for the city of Largo for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. With us, we have the full commission, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Finger, Commissioner Carroll, Vice Mayor Hulk, Commissioner Robinson, and myself. I just took care of the roll call for you, Diane. We're going to start this evening with the invocation given by Father Michael Strachan from St. Dunstan's Angelican Church, and then we'll have a Pledge of Allegiance immediately following.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you create us in your own image. Grant us grace to contend fearlessly against evil and to make no peace with oppression, and help us to use our freedom rightly in the establishment of justice in our communities and among the nations, for the glory of your holy name. Tonight, Father, we ask especially that you would send down on those who hold public office, especially Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Hulk, and all the members of this commission, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and it's going to be public for righteous hands, one nation, one God, and the people of Florida.
Thank you, and thank you, Father, for being here with us tonight in the invocation. Next up, we actually do have a ceremonial item. I know it's not on the agenda, but Commissioner Samantha Finger represented Largo on the Board of Directors for the PSTA for five years, and they would like to congratulate her on her service and thank you for her service. And I present you virtually with this. I will do it in reality in your mailbox at City Hall. And importantly, it comes with, for folks that serve on the Board of Directors for the PSTA, they get a lifetime pass. So you can go ahead and put your car on the market. You now have a lifetime pass for the PSTA. So thank you so much for your service and congratulations. Next, we'll open it up for citizens' comment. Do we have any citizens' comment this evening?
I see none.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to approval of tonight's agenda.
I'd like to pull eight and 10, please. Move approval.
Second.
Pulling eight and 10, motion for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 4th, 2020.
Still moved. Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We're going to start with a staff report this evening before we move on to the consent docket.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. With me this evening, I have Community Development Advisory Board Chair Beverly Jean Gatewood and Board Member Brett Shortridge, and they're going to make a short presentation to you of the annual report highlighting what the board has accomplished over the past year and their focus for this current year. With that, I will hand it over to Madam Chair Beverly Gatewood.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. How are you all doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Hi, I just want to give a brief summary on what the Community Development Advisory Board has done for the past year. First of all, I would just want to say that our focus area was sustainability, public health and safety, community pride, and we had some initiatives that went along with those three focus areas. For sustainability, the initiatives were review our natural environment to ensure sustainability for future generations, advance a flexible and resilient organization that delivers superior city services, foster a community where opportunities exist for its residents and businesses to realize their full potential. Public health and safety, we focus on investing quality public infrastructure, build a community of safe and healthy neighborhoods, ensure the health, safety, and economic viability of the community through effective emergency management. And community pride, initiatives were develop an active and interconnected downtown, cultivate and support a vibrant intergenerational community that attracts residents and businesses. You can join the conversation on love largo florida.com. And on the board, there are seven members, and I would like to acknowledge the seven members on the board, myself as chair, Anita McHenry, vice chair, Brett Shortridge, Krista Salis, Krista Cosier, Maria Padu, and Denise Foyer, and Commissioner Halle, Commissioner liaison, Ms. Carol Strickland, CD director, Mr. Robert Club, Assistant CD Director, and Mr. Richard Perez, Planning Manager, and Diane Five, Planner Two, Business Board Liaison, and Taylor Hay, Planner Two. I just want to give a brief on who we are as a board. The Community Development Advisory Board provides recommendations to the City Commissioner on programs, projects, and initiatives of the Community Development Department. Many of the goals of the department are reflected in the Comprehensive Development Code, CDC, the 2017 City of Largo Strategic Plan, and the Comprehensive Plan, boarding our future 2040. These goals are achieved through a variety of mechanisms, and CDAC plays an intricate role in providing feedback, supporting staff in the City Commission, and making formal recommendations for the implementation of these mechanisms. CDAC, along with city staff members, have prepared the following annual report for the City Commission to highlight the board's substantive over the year and identify a work plan for the upcoming year. A summary of our duties. Provide a citizen input for housing and community development programs regarding the use of community development block grants, home investment partnership, and state housing initiative partnership funds. Advise the mayor and city commission on the scope of funding for these capital improvement programs, projects, and the annual budget items that are Community Development Department's responsibility. Make recommendations to the mayor and city commission for the establishment, alignment, and implementation of plans, programs, and initiatives, including special projects and studies such as the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan, boarding our future 2040, City of Largo Strategic Plan, and Special Area Plans, SAP. Engage the community to attain, solicit, feedback, and disseminate information concerning the city's planning programs to establish consensus. In an advisory capacity, provide guidance and recommendations to the Community Development Department and to the mayor and city commission on matters related to each division, including administration, building, community standards, economic development, housing, planning, and development services. At this time, I'm turning over to Mr. Shortridge to give his presentation on sustainability.
Can you hear me okay? Commissioner Holmes, are you in an RV? Commissioner Carroll, are you in an RV somewhere? You look like you're traveling.
You never know, Brett.
Good for you. CDAB, here's, as far as sustainability is concerned, CDAB here's info and gives recommendation concerning funds from SHIP, which is known as the State Housing Partnership Program. Examples of SHIP funds usage through 2019, 2020 fiscal year, we gave out over, we had over $110,000 in programs in the city that were, that were used in the city, such as homeowners' rehab, sold on Largo, eviction protection, affordable housing development plan. CDAB heard proposed changes to the citizen participation plan, and then fiscal year 2019, 2020, the city received applications for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, totaling, the applications totaled over $280,000, and we were able to put out about $140,000 worth of funds. $110,000, $12,000 of that came from CDBG, $30,000 came from the general fund, and about $5,000 came from the SHIP fund. The city staff was helped in, but from CDAB drafted the 2019, 2020 CDBG plan, and the CDBG consolidated plan that covers years 2020 through 2024. And if we could move on ahead to public safety, Rick's got the, thank you, sir. The staff sought input concerning short-term vacation rentals via an amendment to the Comprehensive Development Code, a task team of members, members of the city staff from the fire department, police department, community standards, planning and permitting garnered info concerning occupancy limits, parking, voluntary registration, and concerning exemptions from business tax requirements, and a posting of responsible, the responsible party for the property. They looked into standards in Comprehensive Development Code concerning hotels, as well as medical offices and clinics, and considering them is industrial limited land use, classified, and classified emergency response, public safety services and government offices, transportation utility land use. We got an update from Community Standards Head Tracy Schofield, and the outreach program called Pride in Your Park was a way to reach out to citizens, the citizens of Largo that live in the mobile home parks, and a lot of people live in parks. And that is pretty much my, my part of the show. Thank you so much.
Community pride, non-conforming sign augmentation. Well, for the past 12 years, we have been trying to reduce the number of non-conforming signs. And so far, as the staff estimate that there are at least 567 individual properties with a variety of non-conforming freestanding signs that could be impacted by the augmentation. The deadline was June 5th, 2019. 2018 updates is an effort to stay informed and involve the CDAC received updates from Community Development Staff Liaison regarding the institutional future land use process and allowable uses, the creation and purpose of the commercial recreation future land use designation, development projects from September 2018 to present, and projects under review. The Largo Tri-City Special Area Plan, the board was engaged by a project management team, provided an update and obtained input regarding the special area plan. The area was, is recognized by Forward Pinellas as an important multimulti-model commercial corridor with significant economic base and employment center. New community engagement administrator board was engaged by the community outreach coordinator in their role, the city of Largo, their role for the city of Largo. CDAC, CDAC may assist the role by offering feedback regarding community projects to be sourced for engagement with Largo residents and be a sounding board. The Gateway Master Plan update is a multimillion-dollar collaborative effort by the Forward Pinellas in multi-disciplinary planning, planning and design. The city of Largo played an important role as one of the partners in addition to Pinellas County, the city of St. Petersburg, the city of Pinellas Park, and Florida Department of Transportation. CDAC was engaged by Planning Division to provide an update on the proposed concepts, strategies, and recommendations from the Gateway Master Plan. Downtown Plaza Update, the city-owned property is currently under construction and is located opposite of the Largo Central Park at the interest of the West Bay Drive Community Redevelopment District. The plaza will be, the plaza will create a sense of, a sense of place that supports the city branding and downtown identity efforts. It will encourage walking and biking with meaning, rendering paths while providing a visual reminder of the community bid into sustainability to incorporate solar elimination and Florida-friendly landscape. Designed and approved in late 2018, construction began October 2019. National Planning Month, City of Largo Mayor signed a proclamation declaring October 2019 as Community Planning Month. Planning Division presented this year's National Community Planning Month theme, planning for infrastructure that benefits all. Planning plays a critical role in well-planned infrastructure systems that strengthen community, foster economics, expand opportunities, and promote equitable development. 2020 Work Plan. Code Enforcement Updates, CDBG Subsidiary and Applications, CDBG Funding Recommendations, CDBG Action Plan, Consolidate Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, Affordable Housing Strategies, Quarterly Information Regarding Development Projects and Efforts, Largo Tri-City SAP Implementation, and CDCA Affordable Housing Update. That is our annual report from the Community Development Advisory Board, and I would like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to myself and Mr. Shortridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Chair Gatewood and Mr. Shortridge for presenting this annual report. I'd like to thank both of you, as well as all the members of the CDAB and the crowd for, for all the work that they've been doing. I know staff, and we've been keeping you busy. There's been a lot of exciting things going on, and as you, as you go around the city of Largo, you can see the projects that you guys had an impact on. So thank you for your input and your, your dedication to our great city. So thank you. Does anybody else have anything to add from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, go ahead.
I would deeply, I thank both of you and the entire board and staff for this report. It was all put together. I do, I would like to know both of your opinions of what you thought of the process of the Gateway Master Plan that was presented to you from staff and from board Pinellas.
Well, myself, okay, myself, I did participate in an event that took place at PTEC that had a lot of the partnerships and residents from the community that came out to just get an idea of what plans were for that particular area. And I must say that it was a great turnout. I learned a lot that night, and I look forward to seeing the end results of that project.
Thank you. I appreciate your, seeing you out there and letting me know that it was a great turnout and you learned a lot because that was what citizens wanted to know, and that's kind of what we were trying to reach out for to get more community input. So I thank you for that. The next question I can have is on the, what are your views for in 2020, of personal views or what you think of staff on the affordable housing strategy? Have you guys got any update on that?
Not at hand, but I would like to see, myself, I would like to see more funds put in for affordable housing in the Largo area. We have a lot of people that's moving into our community now, and we are growing. So I think it's feasible that we try to build affordable housing for those that are starting to move into our community. I've been a resident since 93, and I've noticed the, the growth of the city.
Thank you. And the last one is probably for Rick. What on their planning and development, what is the glitch fix?
Yes. So periodically, staff reviews our Comprehensive Development Code, and from time to time, we see that there may be conflicting regulations. There may be a need to update a standard. So we kind of lump that in together and call it a glitch amendment, and we generally present that to the commission in work session and then bring it forward. But from time to time, we also kind of troubleshoot problems with the code, and we'll bring individual amendments when we identify a problem. But we kind of, when we say a glitch, it's usually we're trying to resolve something that, that either an implementation or we find a conflict between different standards.
Thank you. And I give thank you both. I really appreciate having you both here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Anybody else have any input? Well, thanks again for your presentation, and thanks for being here with us tonight, and we look forward to seeing you soon.
All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item four, reappointment of Elizabeth Cardenas as a member of the Personnel Advisory Board. Item five, appointment of Virginia Peggy Tucker as a member of the Finance Advisory Board. Item six, appointment of John Fennessey as an alternate member of the Personnel Advisory Board. Item seven, approval of a one-year extension to the Emergency Medical Services ALS First Responder Growth Management Agreement. Item nine, authorization to purchase a replacement skid stair loader for the Environmental Services from Baccata, Tampa, in accordance with Florida State Contract Number 22101000-15-1, in the estimated amount of $32,616. Item 11, authorization for additional fiscal year 2020 spending for miscellaneous manhole rehabilitation in accordance with bid number 19-B-687, in the estimated amount of $335,700.
Thank you. You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion as outlined in the commission packets.
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item number eight, Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you. Hello, Chief Carroll. This is actually directed towards Henry more than anybody. There's two sentences in here that I think need a little bit more public exposure on, not so much from the fire department, but it says, I mean, I know what this thing is. I know parts of it because I watched when the beer truck was donated and they worked on this, this vehicle. But it says, these personnel work together to mitigate emergencies requiring special tools and knowledge, including high-angle rescue, confined space rescue, building collapse, and trench rescue. That's one sentence. Then the other one says, Largo Fire Rescue Personnel attend technical rescue training courses to meet the certification requirements. I would like to have a detail, a little more like at a work session, as to what we actually do with this truck, because I mean, it's parked at Station 42, and I know it's in training constantly, but if the department, I mean, if it's agreement with the rest of the commission, I'd like the department to put on a little demonstration with this thing and a detailed explanation as to what we actually do with this vehicle. I mean, I know it's a county vehicle, but it's our people that are driving the thing and digging the holes, et cetera.
Yeah, and the fire department, you know, would be happy to do that and provide any detail that the commission would like. You know, this is, is a good example of where all the fire agencies here in Pinellas County coordinate their efforts. So for instance, every department doesn't need a technical rescue team. So, so we have one in the city, and I think there's, there's other departments that also have technical rescue teams. So we help each other out, similar to, we have a hazardous materials team where different agencies provide both personnel and equipment. And the county covers a lot of the overhead costs, and they provide, as you said, that, that vehicle, they provide the equipment. And, and I believe they also are now paying for the costs associated with training our, our employees.
Yeah, that's the $56,400. But I think there's more stuff on that truck than, on that vehicle than is just outlined in this memo. And that's what I said, I'd like to, I think it'd be good for the public to know that, you know, this is where your tax money is going, because I think that truck is a lot more complicated than just the two sentences that are in this, this agenda item.
Oh, yeah, it is. It's much more complicated. It's very specialized equipment.
Chris and Sean are sitting there saying, oh, how are we going to answer this guy?
That's, that is a great point, Commissioner, and we try to show that off at Open House as well. We actually set it up, and we also do it at Citizens Academy. So we'd be happy to do that.
Regular commission meeting or work session, I think it'd be a pretty neat thing to go, go through, have a good look at it. But that's all I have. You want me to do the, let me do, make the motion?
I was just going to say, maybe if it's in the next few months, we could just do like a video walkthrough where a couple people that work on that, on that truck can kind of walk through and, and talk about, just like they would at Citizens Academy, talking all about all the functions on the truck so that we can play it here and then, and then play it again on, on the city's Facebook page, as well as the fire department's Facebook.
That would work. I guess we're going to continue having meetings like this then.
For a little while.
Okay. I move to approve a one-year extension of the technical rescue agreement with Pinellas County.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Good job, Sean.
Hey, thank, great to meet you. Thank you. Well done. Next up is item number 10.
Yeah, this is, this is nitpicky, I know. But if you read the memo, it says, the following are the major portions of the interlocal agreement. Number one, it says, area is given to Bel Air at no cost. Okay? But if you go to item three, it says, Bel Air shall be permitted to store debris on the lot for 90 days. But we're not giving it to them. We're letting them use it. I know it's pretty nitpicky, but I think just for future reference, we might want to just change the language on this thing and just say, you know, we're going to let them use it. We're not, we're not giving it to them.
So the use of the area is given, probably.
Yeah, but it says the area is given to Bel Air. We're not going to, we're not going to de-annex it. End of my nitpicking.
All right. That's, that's on the record now. Do we have a motion?
Yeah. I move to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Largo and the town of Bel Air for storm debris storage location. Bel Air for storm debris storage location. In fact, we're not giving it to them.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next up is item number 12.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Ordinance Number 2020-31 is a proposed amendment to the city's Code of Ordinances to repeal standards and redundancy in regulation of portable storage containers. This is a companion case to the next agenda item. There have been no changes since first reading, and the City Commission approved it on first reading seven zero on August 4, 2020. Be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance Number 2020-31, an ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Chapter 11, Environment, Article 3, Outside Storage and Parking of Certain Vehicles by amending Section 11-73 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by deleting the definition of portable storage container, repealing Section 11-81 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Do we have any public input on this?
We do not.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-31 on second and final reading.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Holmes, a second from Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next is item number 13.
Okay, that's me as well. Ordinance Number 202032 is a proposed amendment to Chapters 16 and 20 of the Comprehensive Development Code to consolidate standards and regulations for the temporary, permanent, and seasonal accessory use of portable storage containers. There have been no changes since first reading, and the Planning Board approved this item four zero on July 2, 2020, and the City, City Commission on first reading seven zero on August 4, 2020. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance Number 2020-32, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Development Code by amending Chapters 16 and Chapter 20 to establish regulations for permanent, temporary, and seasonable, seasonal portable storage containers as an accessory use, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any, um, public input on this?
We do not.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-32 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next up is item number 14.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I am here for ordinance number 2020-40 for a second reading to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, to clarify language prohibiting the sale or use of polystyrene and polypropylene food service articles. Particularly, the two amendments that were made for this were to create exemptions for two different scenarios, and one, that would be vendors who are donating food on city property, and two would be for, um, private organizations who are renting city property for public events. Uh, and I am here for any questions.
Ordinance Number 2020-40, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Chapter 11, Article 1, Division 1 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances entitled Prohibition of the Sale or Use of Polystyrene, Polypropylene Food Service Articles and BioPlastic Straws by City Contractors and Temporary Vendors to Clarify the Definition of City Contractor and Temporary Vendor.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
We do not.
Any questions from the commission?
Uh, Mayor, I don't have a question. I have a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to, you know, everybody knows how I voted on this, and, and we had a lengthy discussion at a work session several months ago. Um, I just want to point out again, um, you know, this, um, is, is in a, is not in alignment with our strategic focus, um, regarding sustainability. Um, I think that, you know, we have made great strides, uh, in the City of Largo regarding sustainability and, and have a long way to go, and, um, I think that by allowing this to change and, and allowing, um, you know, to, to go down this path, we're, we're not working towards the goals that we set. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, I would like to see that, uh, you know, this come back in a very near, uh, in the very near future to be able to, uh, you know, again, to achieve some of the goals that we've set in the City of Largo. Um, I think that we are doing ourselves a disservice, um, by not, you know, enforcing this in our own buildings, um, regardless of who's using the buildings in the City of Largo. Um, and I, you know, I just want to put that out there again. I, I have no intention or, or thought that I'm going to change anybody's mind on this. Um, but, uh, again, I think that, you know, we talked about it, the, the, the C-Dab talked about sustainability at the, at the very beginning of the meeting. We're going to talk about the system of sustainability issues at the end of the meeting. Um, and again, we've done some great things in the City of Largo, but we are going to have to make some hard, just choices and, and, um, decisions in the, in the very near future to meet the goals that we have set. And, and this is extremely easy compared to some of the things that we're going to have to do in the very near future if we intend on ever meeting any of those goals. So, um, I, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. Again, I, I appreciate everything that we've done to this point. We've got a long way to go, and, and this is not by any means helping that out. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fenger.
Thank you. And I think, um, Commissioner Robinson's comments are well taken, um, but it may be in timing, given what's going on in the, in the economy now. Uh, I, I think it's, what this decision is, may, may be really relative to what's going on, and so that we're not putting an extra burden on anybody else, even though I understand what our own goals are, and I still think we're, we're moving in the right direction. Um, I think that what you, about readdressing this at a future time, where things around us that are not under, under our control right now, uh, are better, then, um, it may be appropriate to look at it again. But, um, I, I think in timing, just as it is, I, I think it's appropriate to move forward with it as it is. But I, I understand, and I agree with Commissioner Robinson with your concerns about ensuring that we're still employing that type of sustainability. But as I said, I think the timing of what's going on is, um, we, we don't want to put one more hamper on certain businesses right now. But thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Um, I just want to say, go ahead.
I move to deny ordinance 2020-40 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I, I was going to just, uh, say that, uh, I do expect that, uh, we're going to continue this conversation, uh, so we're going to talk about sustainability is one of our focus principles or principles, our focuses, and, uh, we're going to continue this conversation. Uh, I don't know how soon this will come back where we, um, look to mandate that somebody that's renting our facility, uh, abide by the kind of rules that we set for ourselves. Um, but I, I, I know and I hope that we'll do it soon. Um, um, so I, I think that we'll, I know we'll continue this conversation and, and at some point do this. Um, I do have a motion and a second, that's to deny, uh, the item. And it's going to be tough to see how everybody says, what everybody says on the Zoom meeting, so if you could raise your hand, all in favors, say aye.
Why don't you pull the board, Woody?
Okay, we'll do that. Um, and this is a motion to deny the, the, uh, ordinance.
Sorry, Mayor, did you ask for public comment? Did I miss that?
I did. I did ask for public comment before we started.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, it, um, Ms. Brunner, if you could pull the board, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fenger?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulk?
No.
Commissioner Carroll?
No.
Motion fails two to five.
Thank you. I'll entertain another motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-40 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Woody, pull the board again.
I think, I think we'll, uh, be okay if, uh, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 And all opposed, say aye. No. 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 Um, so, motion passes five to two with, uh, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Robinson saying no. Next up is item number 15.
Good evening, Mayor, and good me, evening Commissioners. This is the second reading of ordinance number 202045, a proposed ordinance preventing the removal of brick pavement and granite curbing without city commission approval unless exempted. There are no changes from the first reading. The previous first reading was approved by the City Commission on August 4, 2020 by a vote of seven to zero. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Ordinance Number 2020-45, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, preventing the unauthorized removal of brick pavement and granite curbing without city commission approval unless exempted, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I have, I have no public input.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-45 on second and final reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up is item number 16.
Ms. Brunner, I'm sorry, I, I was, uh, in transition. Am, am I up?
Yes, you are.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Pinellas County. The original joint project agreement is dated May, uh, 2019, and the original project limits were from the Pinellas Trail to Missouri Avenue. The original joint project agreement allowed the county to use the city's design, kind of, actually, the, the city's contract, uh, with the design consultant for relocation or replacement of the county's potable water main, uh, where that was in conflict with the city's project. Now, in January of this year, the city extended its project limits 1,100 feet to the east from Missouri Avenue to the Walmart truck entrance. The purpose of this amendment, number one, is to allow the county to similarly use the city's contract with the design consultant for relocation or replacement of the county's potable wa, water main for the remaining 1,100 feet. Uh, the amendment allows for the design consultant fees, uh, of, of, up to $75,365.
He's frozen.
For county work. Am I back?
You are now.
Okay. Uh, the amendment allows for design consultant fees up to $75,365 for county work, and the city is able to add 5% of that amount for miscellaneous fees for a total not to exceed $79,133.25. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, public input on this?
No public input.
Any questions for Mr. Westmark?
Yeah, I, I've got one. Barry, so this is our contractor on the Rosary Road job and an additional 1,100 feet. So, this 79 grand, this is strictly for the engineering study on this thing?
Yes, sir, that is correct. This is design.
And all it's going to do is go the 1,100 feet just past where the, the Walmart entrance, the, the driveway for, I guess it'd be the east driveway going into Walmart?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Huh. Did, did we know this was going to happen? Or is this just an addendum that came up, an additional job that the county wanted to have done?
The 1,100 feet that the city added to the eastern extent was originally programmed for, for design in 2022 and construction in 2024. Um, that segment was accelerated and appended to, um, the Phase One limits, and when that happened, you know, uh, Pinellas County, uh, just wanted to, um, leverage that, uh, joint project agreement so they could continue kind of in lockstep with the city.
Nope.
Um, as we're doing at. Would, they, they would be.
It's definitely, uh, coming in and out.
Yeah. All right, well, if you, if you come back online.
Do their project without.
All right, just one, one last question. What's going to, do, do we anticipate anything like this for the final phase of Rosary Road from the Walmart driveway to Eagle Lake Park? Are we going to go through this again, or are we going to do a little bit of preventative maintenance here?
First of all, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, we, uh, the, the county is, um, obligated to move its utilities when they're in, uh, conflict with, with, uh, our project. So, it's very likely that we will enter into a, a joint project agreement with the county for potable water mo, main relocation for the remainder of, uh, the Rosary Road project.
Yeah, maybe if I could just jump in here and add to this a little bit. If you remember, the Phase One for the Rosary Road project was, uh, from the Pinellas Trail to Missouri Avenue, and then, uh, the, uh, City Commission made the decision because we all realized that that segment of rosary, uh, that's immediately adjacent to the Walmart is, uh, dysfunctional, that we would go ahead and do that as, as a separate project. And as Barry said, add that on to the original Phase One, which was going to stop at Missouri Avenue. So, when we added that on, that's when the county came back and said, hey, it makes sense for us to include our water line that's in that same area in your project. So, it's not like anybody really overlooked this or anything. It's just that the county realizes it makes sense to do it as part of our project in conjunction with us, and this is all county money that's going into this.
Okay, I mean, there's, there's not a, there's no problem with this, Henry, it's just I, I was wondering if it's going to, if someone has already looked at the area from Walmart to Eagle Lake Park. Now, that, that basically my only question. I'm going to take that as a no then.
Uh, actually, um, uh, Commissioner Holmes, you, you can take that as a yes. Uh, Pinellas County, uh, Utilities, um, has begun evaluating the remainder of the Phase, Rosary Road Phase Two project.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And this, um, item here is, is taken out of Phase Two and moved into Phase One, which is really the, the issue that created all of this, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions?
I move to approve the authoriz, authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment number one to the design joint project agreement dated May 30th, 2019, between Pinellas County and the city of Largo for the relocation of county utilities for the Rosary Road Phase One Community Streets Improvement Projects to provide design for the additional 1,100 feet of potable water main replacement in the amount not to exceed $79,133.25. Twenty-five cents.
Correct.
Motion a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next is item number seventeen.
Okay. This item, very similar to the last item, related to this same 1,100 feet of Rosary Road. So this item is to authorize the city manager to enter into an amendment number one of the Rosary Road Phase One Construction Joint Project Agreement with Pinellas County. This joint project agreement was originally dated October 2019. The original project limits, same as design, from the Pinellas Trail to Missouri Avenue. And this joint project agreement allowed the county to use the city, the city's construction contractor contract for relocation or replacement of the county's potable water main, where it's in conflict with the city's project. So the purpose of this amendment, number one, is to allow the county to similarly use the city's contract with the construction contractor for relocation or replacement of the county's potable water main for the remaining 1,100 feet. This amendment allows for construction costs up to five, half million dollars for county work, and the county is able to add 10% of this amount for mobilization, maintenance of traffic, and miscellaneous administrative fees for a total not to exceed $550,000. Staff is available for question.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this item?
I have none.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the construction joint project agreement dated October 22nd, 2019, between Pinellas County and the city of Largo for the relocation of county utilities for the Rosary Road Phase One Community Streets Improvement Project to provide construction for an additional 1,100 feet of potable water main replacement in the amount not to exceed $550,000.
Second.
And no pennies.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is item number eighteen. You're on, you're on, Mr. Adams, you're still muted. Top right of your little screen there.
Just push all the buttons, Kim.
See if Preston can take care of it from the control booth, maybe. There we are. Good.
It was, it was a challenge, so.
I don't know what they, what they say about learning new tricks. I'm not sure.
Every day is a new learning experience online here. Good evening. This item is a request proposed sewer rate increase of 10% a year for each of the next three fiscal years. The increase is required based on debt service payments that have begun and will begin in the next year or so, related to approximately $130 million of construction projects, which has, have been ongoing for over 10 years. Initially, the projection was to propose a 25% rate increase a year ago, and at the time, some of the projects were taking a little longer than expected. So that meant the debt service payments would be pushed out, and therefore, that rate increase that had been projected was postponed till now. Based on current conditions, economic conditions, city manager was concerned with proposing a large rate increase all at once, which resulted in the proposal before you tonight, which is a 10% rate increase as of 10-1, and then again, two additional 10% increases over the next two fiscal years. Another driver of the costs requiring the rate increase has to do with the debt coverage ratio, which simply means we're going to have higher debt payments. Therefore, the debt, the loan agreement requires a slightly higher coverage above the debt in order to provide a cushion to the lender. We're also doing something unique this time. We're proposing three rate increases together. We've never done that before. Usually, we bring a rate increase for one year at a time, and again, it's often much larger than the 10%. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2020-47, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending the city of Largo Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 2, Division 3, Sections 23-84, to revise certain wastewater rates, providing for the effective date of the new rates, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I have none.
Any questions from the commission?
I have a question.
Commissioner Smith.
Out of curiosity, I had a citizen that had this on their bill, the notification that this was going to be here, but on their bill, it said September 1st was the first talk that we were having of this. Why did we push it up to now? And I know a couple meetings ago before, we had a citizen who wrote in to us concerned about this. Why, why are we doing this now and not when they could see this on their bill?
This, tonight is really first reading of the ordinance. So by law, we're required to advertise the first public hearing. So the second reading on the ordinance would be the official public hearing for this item.
Okay. Have we, have we gotten any other citizens that have written in or called when they saw their bill?
I did talk to our utility billing staff this morning. We've received maybe 10 to 12 inquiries. I did respond to the three that came to the city commission, and the others received were phone calls. A couple other calls were received from property managers who are in the process of developing their budgets for the new year. So typically, this time of year, people will call looking for guidance on whether there'll be any, any kind of utility rate increases, including solid waste, stormwater, and sewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Kim.
Commissioner Holmes.
What, what percentage of this increase is not directly related to the debt service?
I would say almost all of it is related to the additional debt service payments and the additional coverage ratio requirements that are related to the debt.
Okay. Man, it, it has nothing to do with our increased cost for labor, payroll, I mean, the equipment, everything else that's not included in this?
Well, there are, yeah. We are working on a three-year projection at this moment, which is part of our five-year capital improvements program. So part of that plan includes projections for typical salary increases and, and other cost increases. So those, those are in the mix. But the driver, the main drivers, in other words, if we didn't have the debt related to the projects that we have just constructed, and we didn't have the debt coverage ratio, we wouldn't be talking to you tonight.
Okay. My, my final question on this. Wait, let me get back to you on the thing. I, I have to rephrase this thing. I'll be back.
Mayor, I have a question.
Commissioner Smith.
Kim, for those at home, can you explain the amounts that would be over three years for the average dollar amount?
As far as the increased cost?
Correct.
Yeah, the, for, a lot of the, the increase depends on water consumption. Sewer rates have two components. One's a fixed rate based on no consumption at all, based on water meter, and that covers the fixed cost of, of the system, which is greater than the variable cost. And then there's a variable cost to each sewer customer based on water consumption. So, for example, a single-family home with 5,000 gallons, which is right in the middle of the normal consumption, our rates are capped at 10,000 gallons of water consumption, so, per month. So if, if someone uses more than 10,000 in a month, it doesn't increase their sewer bill. So 5,000 gallons is right in the middle of that range, and a 10% increase would be equal to $3.03 in year one, $3.33 in year two, and that's per month, and then $3.66 in year three. Commercial customers, they, their, their bills vary significantly. They have much different water patterns, different size meters, which increases their fixed cost. So any commercial customer could look at their bill and, and just take a rough estimate of their average bill of 10%, and that would generally roughly equal what their increase would be for them.
Thank you.
I got my question.
Commissioner Holmes.
When you read this thing, let's take your example of 5,000 gallons per month. So actually, according to this thing here, your new rate, I'm, this is oversimplification, $20.68 per thousand. So their bill is going to be over $100 per month, and we get billed every other month. So actually, the water bill for them is going to be $200 a month then. Yes, no?
Um, no, that's, that sounds high. You know, right now, for 5,000 gallons of consumption for the average residential homeowner, the bill is $30.30 per month. That's just sewer. That doesn't include water, stormwater, reclaimed water, or garbage. And all we're talking about tonight is just the sewer portion of their bill. So the average person's bill is much higher than the $30 because that includes water and garbage and stormwater and things like that. So you, someone cannot look at their total bill. They have to just hone in on the sewer portion of their bill. And then I also have to remind everybody that we bill, well, actually, the county bills for the city bi-monthly.
Yes.
City doesn't bill sewer, and that confuses literally everybody. I never get a call where someone doesn't say, well, my monthly bill is, and I say, no, it's not. It's bi-monthly. And then they look at it and they realize. So, and we can't control that. That is up to the county. They bill bi-monthly. There's pros and cons to doing it. So if someone looks at their utility bill, they need to remember that it's for a two-month period, 60 days.
Kim.
Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
To that citizen we had last week with the comment, I believe her bill was $289 plus change. So can you break that down? Like you were saying, you have the citizen who doesn't understand, please.
Well, again, that, that utility bill can include up to five items on that utility bill. And the sewer portion, if she, if, if that customer used 5,000 gallons, that, that $260, about $60 of that would have been for sewer, which again, that $60 is for two months, not one month. And so on top of the sewer bill, the county charges for the water consumption. We also have garbage, solid waste, and then there's a stormwater fee on the utility bill, on the utility bill. And then finally, there's also reclaimed water if a customer uses reclaimed water. So all of those things end up on a person's utility bill, including on top of that, a billing fee that is levied by Pinellas County for mailing out. So her, her bill could very well be $260, depending on, you know, other items that are on that bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I had one question. So this is approving not only this year's increase, but the next two years as well. Let's say in two years, we, we realize that due to several new apartment complexes coming into the city and some other things, we don't need that third increase. At that point, can, what can we do? We just, just pass an ordinance to keep that from happening?
We, we could do that. The, the increase we have proposed really does, you know, take into account a lot of different projections and a lot of different assumptions. You know, currently, growth is projected at about 5% a year. So we, we have anticipated, projected, you know, a, a small growth in revenue, just as we normally do. So, so we're, we don't know, we're, everything is a projection, not prediction, one of my sayings. But we could, we could absolutely go in and change the increase. That would require another ordinance. I, I, I would say though, that there are, there have been discussions and, and talk of other needs, other capital needs for the sewer system, especially regarding discharge of treated effluent. So it, it is, it is possible that there'll be additional needs that will, that will crop up in the next three years. The three 10% increases do provide a little cushion over actual needs, but not, not a lot, not a lot of cushion. So again, anything could happen, but we could reduce rates, absolutely, if not.
The other question that I have is, and, and you may not know this, may, may come back for a second reading, but, but I know there's several other municipalities that have their own sewer systems. And my question is, how, how, are their, are their sewer systems financed in a similar structure, and, and how do their rates compare to ours?
That's a great question. When we, we had a consultant study done about three years ago now, and they did a comparison of several surrounding utility systems, including Pinellas County, Clearwater, St. Pete, Tampa, Hillsborough County. Our rates were, were smack dab in the middle, or even a little to the low side of the middle. And, and we, we have not had a rate increase since 2007, which I believe is fiscal year 08. So I'd like to give a lot of credit to Environmental Services for, you know, keeping a tight rein on expenses over these last years. You know, we, we've really only been out of the Great Recession for a few years, even though, you know, technically, it's been longer. But Environmental Service has done a really yeoman's job, you know, keeping costs down, being efficient where they can, which is why we haven't asked for a rate increase since 2007. So our, to answer your question, our rates are very competitive. And just anecdotally, I have a couple people in finance that wish they lived in Largo, as we are, as we are talking about.
That's, that's not just because of sewer rates. I'm just.
No, that's.
Got a lot of good stuff going on.
There's a lot of great stuff. But the sewer rates that they pay are already significantly higher than the city of Largo's. We'll just say that.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
What if we vote no? What's the ramifications?
Well, um, in, if nothing, the world will not end tonight. It will not, at least not because of that. Um, in the long run, in a year from now, uh, we, if we don't have any increase tonight, and, and, and really, we're proposing three rate increases, but let's just talk about the first one. If we don't have a 10% rate increase tonight, it's, it's likely that we won't meet our coverage ratio by the end of 2021. Now, it, it's, because right now projections, it's just about dead set right on what we need for a coverage ratio. So it would be, it would be cutting it really close not to have any rate increase. If we don't meet the coverage ratio, then we'd be in violation of the loan agreement. And Mr. Zimmick could probably talk to that in more detail, but that's not a good thing. So, um, and then it gets worse from there. In other words, if we don't have a rate increase this year, that creates a compounding effect for the next year and the next year. And so clearly, even if we were to squeeze by and meet our coverage ratio requirement for 2021, we would be nowhere near meeting it for the next two years, and then we'd, we'd be, and then it'd be, it's a snowball effect. Uh, if we don't, if we don't increase rates now, that means a rate increase for the next year would have to be bigger, have to be larger.
I move.
Another question.
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-47 in first reading and schedule a second reading in public hearing on September 1st, 2020.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 6-1.
Sleep well, Kim.
Mayor, did you ask for public comment at the beginning of the discussion?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
I keep missing it when you ask for it in the beginning and, um.
That's all right. It's, it's virtual. I mean, I actually did. Next up is item number 19.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioner. Um, as you said, we'll start tonight with sustainability and end with sustainability. And I am happy to bring you our proposed community composting program. Um, this composting program was initially a directive from October of 2019. Um, staff began looking at the feasibility of the program and, uh, surrounding programs as well. Um, then of course, uh, we all know that, uh, COVID-19 impacted us, and we kind of put this on the shelf. So we're really excited to bring this back and talk about some of the details here, um, and answer any questions. But, uh, overall, this program aligns with our strategic focus on sustainability and specifically Initiative 1, Goal Number 5, to divert waste from our landfill. And in this program, um, we are joining other communities such as the city of St. Petersburg, who launched a similar program, uh, a little over a year ago, the city of Clearwater, who, um, launched a similar program a little over a week ago, and the city of Dunedin, who's currently in the process of launching a similar program. So we're excited to take part of a regional countywide effort, um, to increase our efforts to diverse, diva, uh, divert waste from landfills. Um, so with this, what we would be doing would be purchasing, um, composting bins, large 65-gallon containers, they're outdoor containers, um, and providing those free of charge to residents. We'd purchase 500, um, based off of participation from other communities and our projections. We think that's a, a safe number. And you have the ability to purchase a smaller number, um, in, in the future years moving forward. Uh, we would provide those to, uh, single-family homes free of charge, as well as an extensive education program. We would actually partner with Keep Pinellas Beautiful to help promote the program, um, and ensure participation and that, um, our residents have all the information that they need. Um, and we do intend to hopefully launch this program, um, coming up here in the fall. We're working over the next couple of months to get everything. Um, there's a couple dates listed for the potential launch date, and I think we've, uh, focused on World Food Day, which is Friday, October the 16th. And with that, um, we're here to answer any questions, uh, and have any input from you all on the program.
Well, thank you. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. Can we, uh, can we join into this program? Because it's really, it sounds pretty exciting.
We'll send you a link to the site up.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Commissioner Holmes?
But what are you gonna do about the odor? Compost smells. And I, I didn't see anywhere in here where they were addressing that. I mean, that, that is a, that is an issue because you gotta keep turning it also because that's methane coming out of there.
Yeah, there's just some great questions, and that is, uh, the, uh, primary reason we're working with Keep Pinellas Beautiful as subject matter experts. Um, so for example, that was something that I was concerned with when I started my compost bin at home. Um, I've never had any issues with rodents, bugs, pests, smells, anything like that. Um, there's actually a really great, great process of putting leaves or other dry debris on top, and it eliminates, um, the possibility of that. So working with Keep Pinellas Beautiful to make sure that we don't run into any of those issues in the community.
Well, we had a, we had a person in the neighborhood here who was putting food scraps and lawn scraps and everything else out there, and that got, uh, that got a little stinky. And that's when I read this thing here, I was having deja vu all over again.
Yeah, we'll make sure that the biggest things are no, um, meat by products, no dairy, no fat soils, just fruit, veggies, and other items like that.
Thank you. I, I had a question, and, and I, that's my experience as well. I, I, um, I researched, we composted our house. We have for a long time. And, and, um, and I researched how to do it without, um, without making it smell. And, and you just have to, you can put some yard waste in there, but it has to be like puddings from vegetables and not, you can put eggshells in there if you, if you boil them. Um, but, uh, you can't put meat products or that type of stuff in there, or, or food waste. Um, anyways, um, my question is how, how do we confirm that? I, I'm not sure what these containers look like or how they kind of function, but how do we confirm that the people are using them for composting and not, you know, to store Legos?
Oh, gee.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Um, if any of you happen to be familiar with the program that St. Pete is launching, they look the same. Um, we have a couple quotes from a couple different vendors, uh, hoping to get a 100% recycled product. It's basically a bottomless 65-gallon cylinder. Um, it has a top that you can remove. Um, and so you remove the top and you put the items into that, into the actual container, and so they'll just sit on the ground. Um, and so you have easy access from the top to turn it. And there's also a little lid, um, on the front towards the ground where you can lift up and pull out any of the, any of the fresh compost. So I can certainly send a picture, um, to, to show a little bit more, but, um, they're, they're a fairly large container. Um, and then, um, after we're pressing those out, we do intend to do surveys on a regular basis, potentially six months after, um, we first launched the program, to get, uh, information from residents on how often they're using the container, what they're putting in the container, are they participating in other, um, programs that we're offering, um, and that sort of information as well. So they're quite a large container, and, and we hope to make sure that they're using it the right way by, uh, engaging in surveys.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Question here.
Commissioner Smith?
Has the county at all discussed this on their level?
Yeah, so the county continues to work on their 30-year solid waste master plan. Um, we don't know that organics recycling is going to be part of that. Um, we do know that there is no collection available in Pinellas County, and there's really no compost collection available in Tampa Bay for post-consumer waste. So that's, um, you know, items from individual households or restaurants. Um, certain places like Publix and Wal-Mart participate in a pre-consumer, uh, food waste recycling program. There is a company or two out in Hillsborough County, um, that are certified to handle that waste, but there is so far, um, as far as I know, there are no plans to, um, establish a food waste recovery facility or collection program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. I, um, any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Holk?
Um, just two, two quick questions. Um, I forgot one of them already. I was like trying to retake it. Um, anyway, the, one question though is, are we gonna, um, provide, um, education for this? And then also, oh, I know what the other question was. The, how is it, how are we getting this out to the public? Is it then through your sustainability, um, classes or the, um, meetings that you've been having? Um, unfortunately, the timing of them is not good for me. I have not seen one yet. I apologize. But, um, is that how we're getting this out to the citizens? And, and then also, will we be providing, um, education for people? Because I know people are, are interested in this, but they kind of like, they're not familiar with it, so they kind of, um, have backed away from it a little bit. But I know you do a great job getting things out there and, and getting people educated, so, um, I was just wondering how you are approaching that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a really important part. Um, you know, we, we've had some anecdotal evidence from nearby communities that, um, they've received a bin, but now they don't know what to do, um, and we certainly don't want that to be the case. So we will be having a webinar on the launch date featuring Keep Pinellas Beautiful, and it'll be live on Facebook so that we can answer, uh, any questions from the public about the program, and we'll be posting that on our website. Um, we'll be creating a new, a, a new page on our website for it, Facebook advertisements. Um, all of the containers come, um, with a template about what you can and can't, uh, compost when they're ordered from the vendor. And we're also going to be translating, translating that into a Spanish version as well. Um, and so we'll be doing that as well as a number of other initiatives to get the word out there. Um, and I will say, based on, um, the input from St. Pete and Clearwater, um, who have already launched their program, um, these go quick, and there's a lot of interest, and there's a lot of, um, you know, local support for programs like this. So, uh, I don't anticipate that being a problem, but we're definitely going to make sure that we're doing all we can to get the word out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, are they, um, do we drop them off at the homes, or are they, do they come and pick them up?
Yep, we're going to offer free delivery, so there'll be an online form where they can submit their information. Um, Solid Waste will confirm that they're eligible, uh, meaning they're within the city's Largo limits and that they're a single-family home. Um, because unfortunately, this would not be applicable to, uh, most multi-family units, although that is something that for smaller units, uh, Solid Waste may be able to do as well. Um, but they'll take those just as regular work orders, and they will deliver it directly to, um, the resident with the educational material attached.
Very good. Any other questions? One thing that I did, um, last couple days is I, I kind of did some crunch some numbers and, and don't quote me on my math, but, but according to, you know, if we're just doing this to save money, um, this will pay for itself in about a year and a half, uh, a, as far as stuff that's not going to the landfill that we pay 3750 a ton right now, and that money's going up too. Um, so, so e- even if it's just for the, the fiscal impact, you know, certainly, um, there's a lot of other benefits as well. But, but it's gonna save money for the city. It's, it's gonna help improve the environment. It's gonna, it's gonna help improve the soil in people's gardens. So, so, uh, there's a lot of cool positives to this program. I'm really excited for it.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
That, this is your, this is your second question that you met.
I know. Uh, it, it's something that I've always been interested in, but I just really haven't, um, haven't done anything about. So, um, since I have a captive audience here, no. Um, Laura, I, so I, I know I did talk to somebody about this, and one of their concerns was like, you know, there's a lot of like just two-people homes, you know, so they felt like, is this something that they would do with minimal amount of people in their homes? Or is it geared more towards families? Um, and if that were the case, would this be something that could be like, I don't know, maybe if you have two neighbors living next door to each other where there's only two people in each home, where they would actually be able to share one? Is that something that, um, because I know in my neighborhood, we've got one extreme or the other. It's like one person in the, in these big houses, or there's six people. So is it something that, you know, that could be, you know, part of the, the process where it could be shared even?
Yeah, so two things to answer that. Um, one is I'll just share from my personal experience. Um, there's two people in my household, um, we compost, and it takes us, I think, a little bit longer to get fresh soil just because there's less going in. Um, but as long as you're keeping the rotation going and keeping the soil moist, instead of say, it may be four to six months turnaround time, you might have a six to eight month turnaround time before you get soil. So it's still applicable. Um, but I think it would be wonderful, uh, a wonderful initiative if neighbors wanted to come together and compost and learn together and engage on that. I think that's absolutely something we, we could encourage. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you. My last question. I'm done.
Good question.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Thanks for your work on this. It's, it's, it's an exciting development. I hope to see it, uh, on the streets soon.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Z, Mr., thank you. Mr. Zimmert, do you have anything tonight?
I don't have anything tonight.
Commissioner Finger?
Thank you, but I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Well, 100 years ago today, the 19th Amendment was passed. You know what the 19th Amendment did? Gave women the right to vote. So congratulations to all. Happy birthday, 19th Amendment.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
I know, I can't follow that up.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Holk?
I'd just like to, uh, thank the C-DAP for other awesome work, um, this year. I've been, uh, the liaison this year. I have missed a couple meetings, but, um, it's a great group, and they have, um, definitely have, uh, Largo in their best interests, and, um, I just wanted to share, really appreciate what they do, um, as a committee, um, as a board, and, um, the advice that they give us. And I hope everybody went out and voted today. And, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, just real quickly, Mayor. Um, as I said last week, I spent Thursday and Friday here in the Airstream online with the Florida League of Cities doing a variety of committee things, and you've seen the results of that work. Um, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Robinson for joining the Board, Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities. He and Dan Paraki are the current representatives for the Suncoast League on the Florida League. Just by way of information, a few years ago, we adopted sort of a succession plan for not allowing, here at the Suncoast League, not allowing somebody to lock up those seats for decades like some of the leagues do. And, uh, we've been very vocal, at least I have, about, um, frustration on, on the fact that mayors of certain 10 large cities in this state get a seat on the Board of Directors just by virtue of the fact that they represent a large city, yet they don't participate in their local leagues or often with the Florida League. So I'm gonna pass that baton over to Jamie and let him continue that. But I would like to say also that the city of Largo in particular and the Suncoast League are well represented in the Florida League. We have elected officials and staff members on each of the legislative policy committees. Um, we serve in a number of leadership positions. Mr. Zimmert and his firm, um, provide training to the league. So, you know, years ago, we weren't as active, but today, we're, we're well represented. And I, and I thank you for the opportunity to be a part of that, and congratulations again to Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
I would like to thank, thank you, Tucker, for stepping up to volunteer on the FAB, um, and joining them. Also, I'd like to thank all the voters for turning out to vote or, uh, voting by mail, and, uh, hopefully you do the same in November. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All I was gonna say was, uh, congratulations to Commissioner David Robinson for being named to the Board of Directors, uh, for the Florida League Cities. Uh, that's a huge honor, and, and, uh, you, you was proud up there, and thank you for all your work that you do both here in the city as well as statewide. Uh, it's, uh, it's, you do a, you do a great job. So thank you, and we're proud of you. Uh, Mr. Schu-
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Uh, are there any action items?
Uh, the only one I had was Commissioner Holmes' request for a work session, presentation, and, um, demonstration on the technical rescue truck, and, uh, Mayor Brown's suggestion that it be a video walkthrough demonstration.
Yeah, that might be the easiest way to do it in the next couple months. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, Henry, could we maybe get-
Henry, could we maybe get Casey or someone from the library to maybe come to a work session or do just a quick thing about their new program called Read Woke? They started it with their bean staff program, and everything that's going on with a new initiative they have over there, I think would be a good update to the commission, if possible.
Yeah, we'd be very happy to do that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mayor.